As Superintendent of Monticello Public Schools, I want to be known for our ability to meet the educational and social emotional needs of all of our students regardless of students' backgrounds, race, culture, religion, gender, socioeconomic status, or language barriers so our students can reach their full and highest potential and be prepared for a successful future. I want Monticello Public Schools to be known for the great care it provides its people, resources, and programs. In order to accomplish this, I will be setting clear collective efficacy expectations for leaders, teachers, and all staff members and our families. I will be setting the stage for the work of all to be connected across the district, understood, and carried out. What would this look like? Well, you would observe our students understanding what is expected of them and believing that they are part of the process. You would observe our teachers making sure that they believe the direction of the school district and being part of decisions, and they are supported with authentic two-way relationships occurring. Our families, you would see them believing in the direction of the school district. They're part of the decisions, and they are supported, and they provide support to us through authentic relationships. Principals and directors have a big key role. We need to make sure that they believe in the direction of the school district and they're part of decisions, support, and authentic relationships throughout their thoughts, their words, and actions. We are the key to finally developing a district that strives for collaboration, collective efficacy, and sticking together, especially during trying times. Staff, we need the staff to believe in the direction of the school district and being part of decisions, support, and authentic two-way relationships, doing their jobs with trust that they will be supported. And finally, there's going to be some non-negotiable expectations. All employees, support roles, certified roles, and leadership need to understand that leaders, supervisors will support coach, support coach, and if support and coaching are not working, we can support people to find employment outside the district. This has to be a common understanding. The improvements I am prioritizing for next year according to evidence gathered include: Developing a culture of collective efficacy. I will be setting clear expectations for leaders, teachers, and all staff members, and families and students. I will be setting the stage for the work of all to be connected, understood, and carried out. I will monitor this through a series of communications, surveys, and focus groups. Everything that we do that matters will be measured and published on the website for all to see. That's how I believe I can support the work of all throughout the district. I look forward to getting started and having the best year ever.
Hi, I'm Shelley.
And I'm Clay.
We are the proud principals at Pine Wood Elementary. At Pine Wood, we want to be known for educating the whole child. We care about the academic, social, emotional, and physical growth of every student, every day. At Pine Wood, we will observe students demonstrating resilience, integrity, critical thinking, and effective communication. Students will believe in themselves and the contributions they can make at Pine Wood. Students will also strive to achieve grade level standards.
At Pine Wood, we will observe teachers delivering evidence-based instruction in all content areas. Teachers will create positive impactful relationships with students, colleagues, and families building a strong positive school culture. Teachers will design instruction to meet the varied needs of all learners.
At Pine Wood, we will observe families engaging in their child's learning. Families will collaborate with school staff by communicating respectfully, participating in school conferences, and attending events. Families will help ensure regular student attendance, which means 90% of the students attend school 90% of the time.
Our FAST MCA and behavioral data demonstrate the need to prioritize the following areas: All students striving to read at grade level, creating critical thinkers, utilizing social emotional skills, increasing student engagement, focus on Tier One and Tier Two instructional strategies.
We are looking forward to the best year yet. Thank you for your support.
All right. What I would like our community education program to be known for is like I love that we offer a wider range of engaging programming that meets community needs and that is accessible to all Monticello residents. Programs will support learners of all ages, provide opportunities for lifelong learning, community engagement, and making our schools the center of our community. How you're going to notice this is learners will participate in a large array of programming that enrich their lives. This will include young families learning together, preschoolers getting prepared for school, school-aged children, kindergarten through 12th grade participating in recreational and enrichment activities outside of the school day, adults getting what their needs met through either educational recreational opportunities, and the community utilizing our facilities to the best of their ability and maximizing that they are coming in to participate in a wide variety of things, either through programming, couple two events, supporting our community, and hosting their events here at school. You'll see our staff, they will create opportunities that fill community needs. They'll also foster an environment of lifelong learning, ways for the community to create meaningful connections with others through programming or engagement opportunities here in our school district. We will see program participation numbers and customer feedback drive our programming for the future and how we're going to improve and what we're going to expand as we do. We also, as a community, we'll see our facilities filled with community members participating in a wider range of programming from recreational educational opportunities happening outside of the school day, so that could be on the nights, weekends, and in the summertime. Improvements for the upcoming year, we're looking at trying to increase our relationship, enhancing our relationship with our youth sports associations through increased communication, increasing their facility use, and how can we streamline services between the school, city, and our association for all of our outdoor usage. We also like to see an increase in participation numbers and also a percentage of new programming that is offered to meet our community needs as we gather feedback for what our community wants or areas that are underserved or populations that are underserved. We want to see increased facility usage outside of the busy season, so more use on the fall in the gyms, program that fits on the off-seasons, that's not always competing in our spaces, and using some of our other spaces, enhancing our dormitory usage, and just bringing more things here into the schools in general. Another big thing is we want to, as we start kicking off our school foundation, how are we going to increase the fiscal stability of our foundation and start building that process of our community supporting our school foundation through donations and manpower hours? Then we also, I also want to see us as a community department do an increase in our regular communication with our community members on program opportunities that students and adults can engage through programming, through community education, either through facility rentals or through programs.
Hi, I'm Cindy Foshing, Director of Teaching and Learning.
I'm Allison Colwell, an instructional specialist.
I'm Kristen Hall, District Literacy Lead.
So what do we want Monticello Schools to be known for? We want Monticello Public Schools to be known for their ability to meet the educational and social emotional needs of all students regardless of their diverse backgrounds so they can reach their highest potential and be prepared for post-high school, college, or career goals, and be productive members of today's world.
We want our students to be achieving academic proficiency with equitable access to quality curriculum and instruction. We want them prepared for rigorous coursework and exemplify integrity and respect. We desire our teachers delivering evidence-based instructional reading practices, tailoring their lessons for diverse learners. We want lessons aligning with the standards and the instructional framework. We want our teachers engaging in continuous improvement and partnering with families.
For our families, we want to see a sense of belonging, participating in school events, communicating with school staff, and supporting student development outside our school. For our principals, we want to see fostering an inclusive school environment, providing professional learning opportunities, ensuring high-quality instruction through evaluations and leading curriculum development.
Our prioritized improvements for next year include enhancing students' reading and comprehension based on FAST bridge and MCA data and feedback from our coaches. We want to implement the district instructional framework and provide related professional development, and increase family engagement as indicated by our family engagement survey. We also want to improve our intervention programs, including Title One EL reading interventions across K through 12.
Today, I'd like to share with you our vision for a thriving educational community, one that empowers students, inspires teachers, and engages families through the power of technology and innovative learning. Cybersecurity, network infrastructure, staff devices, and continued classroom redesign, customer support, and data integration are our six focus areas. The story of our students, on our best school, you would see students harnessing the potential of digital tools to become proficient communicators. They articulate their ideas clearly and effectively across a range of platforms, engaging in meaningful dialogue with peers, educators, and global audiences. Students here thrive in dynamic collaboration, working together on projects in real time, and leveraging each other's strengths to achieve collective goals. Our learners are not just passive recipients of information, they are critical thinkers who analyze complex problems and make informed decisions. They use technology research to evaluate and synthesize information, demonstrating a reflective approach to tackling challenges. Creativity flourishes as students experiment with new design ideas and innovative solutions and create original content. They use digital tools to unlock their full creative potential. Technology fluency is a hallmark of our students. They confidently integrate various technologies into their learning, seamlessly navigating tools to enhance their projects, presentation, and daily activities. Above all, our students are innovative problem solvers. They approach issues with an inventive mindset and a growth mindset, exploring multiple solutions and demonstrating resiliency in overcoming obstacles. They think outside the box, applying creative problem-solving techniques to real-world scenarios. The story of our teachers. Our educators are at the forefront of this transformation, using technology to facilitate effective communication to ensure students articulate their ideas clearly and engage in meaningful dialogue using a variety of digital platforms to enhance interaction. Teachers here encourage dynamic collaboration, creating opportunities for students to work together using collaborative technologies. They foster a classroom environment that values teamwork and shared problem solving, guiding students to leverage digital tools for local and global collaboration. In their classrooms, you will see a strong emphasis on advanced critical thinking. Teachers redesign activities that challenge students to analyze, evaluate, and synthesize information using technology, promoting inquiry-based learning, helping students develop the critical thinking skills they need to address complex issues. Creativity and innovation are nurtured through the integration of the SAMR model, which allows students to redefine and redesign learning experiences. They inspire students to explore and express their creativity through technology, supporting them in creating original content and experimenting with new ideas. Our teachers are technologically fluent with emerging tools and seamlessly integrate that into their instruction. Educators also foster global connections, facilitating communication and collaboration with peers from diverse backgrounds. They model innovative problem solving, present real-world problems, and guide students through the process of developing creative solutions. The story of our families. Our families play a crucial role in the ecosystem of using digital tools to stay informed and communicate effectively with teachers in the school. They are active participants in their child's learning journey, engaging in dynamic collaboration with educators to support school activities and projects. At home, families encourage critical thinking, creativity, and reinforcing skills they learned at school. They support their child's exploration and expression of ideas through technology. Promoting a culture of innovation and originality, families stay technologically engaged using digital tools to moderate academic success. They also participate in virtual meetings. Moreover, families demonstrate innovative problem solving in their everyday lives using technology to address challenges and support their children's education. Finally, in our vision, students, teachers, and families create a cohesive, dynamic learning environment through effective communication, collaboration, critical thinking, and creativity. They harness the power of technology to thrive in an ever-evolving digital landscape. Together, we are not just preparing for the future, we are shaping it. Thank you for being a part of this exciting journey toward a brighter educational future.
Little School Board, Rachel and I are here. Eric had asked that we share a little bit about what we want to accomplish this upcoming school year. We're going to get kind of specific with some information with our presentation with you on Monday night as well. You'll see some graphics, we'll explain those in detail as well, and then we'll come back and share with you what specifically you'll see the teachers doing, the students doing, and what you can expect from the Monticello Middle School this year.
All right, so we want Monticello Middle School to be known for effective and productive interdisciplinary teaming, advisory programs that build connections and reflect the needs of all students, rigorous, varied, and innovative instruction, a wide variety of exploratory programs and opportunities, and quality transition programs. To meet this vision, you will see many staff doing the following things that Mr. Sherber is going to explain.
This graphic, as you can see, it's got teachers' names on the top. We will be focusing on building instructional leadership from within our staff. In the blue, you'll be able to see the specific things that all teachers and all staff are going to be working on, the instructional framework that we've been working on this past year, we built a foundation for. The science of reading will be a key component. Each cohort has worked hard this past year on identifying a rationale for each department, and we'll be looking at different ways to embed those into each curriculum. Each department you'll see in yellow has a lot of data to port over on a regular and monthly basis to modify lesson plans, address student learning, and having students measure their progress towards that learning. And finally, you'll see some departments have a lot of work to do pouring through curriculum. They have two departments that have a curriculum review, and that's probably where we're going to need the most help.
So thinking through all the hard work our teachers will be putting in, we hope to observe students embracing the vision of a learner specifically through being effective communicators. We hope to observe them utilizing those science of reading strategies being presented by staff across all curricular areas.
Additionally, our students will continue to show their star leader qualities, meeting classroom expectations, show tolerance for all students. They'll do this by continuing to build on student voice through monthly student leadership meetings and being intentional about including cross-sections of the diverse learners to ensure that we meet the needs of all of our students, as well as reviewing the behavioral data that'll guide us in our instruction and what is expected at the middle school.
Finally, we are very proud of our parent representation and involvement. We hope to continue observing our MMS families regularly attend monthly parent meetings where we ask and invite them to help us guide decisions and get input from families in order to make well-rounded decisions in the best interests of our school community.
Monticello Middle School is excited to continue this great work of our building, collective efficacy across the staff, students, and families in order to build upon our students' previous successes. We're looking forward to working with you to prioritize this, our goals, and be efficient with our resources. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sarah Welk, and I'm the Director of Student Services. My mission reflects a commitment to inclusivity, respect, and authenticity, which are vital for fostering a positive, effective, and supportive team environment, to promote a solution-oriented mindset and provide support to team members to see challenges as opportunities for growth and learning rather than obstacles. We want to observe students attending school on a consistent basis to increase the attendance rates. Knowing when to access the established mental health supports, we want to support and observe our students to be healthy mentally, emotionally, and physically, not just academically. Learning body regulation and self-control skills and use these skills during peer interactions. Demonstrating the traits of a vision of a learner, persons of integrity, effective communicators, critical thinker, and resilient learners. What we'd like to see staff is to implement strategies from training in areas of trauma-informed, behavioral strategies, and cultural responsive teaching. We want to see staff embedding the components of MTSS into the fabric of their daily professional lives and to help staff understand how their role in the MTSS structure directly correlates to student success as a whole. We want families to feel engaged and create positive relationships and improve accessibility and engagement opportunities. We want families to feel a sense of belonging in their child's education. An area of growth is to increase the engagement of our Hispanic, American Indian families of color, increase attendance rates, family engagement opportunities, and using educlimer data and family surveys. I believe in creating a supportive and empowering environment where everyone feels valued, motivated, and capable of contributing their best work. Building capacity within team members and fostering a positive mindset will lead to positive culture, productivity, and success for the team as a whole. Thank you.
I'm Rob Daniker, Director of Human Resources for Monticello Public Schools, and I'm here today representing my entire human resources team, including Zach, Sherry, and Tom. So what we want our human resources department known for as a whole, for our human resources department, success can mean flying under the radar, meaning that things are going so smoothly that our partners may often overlook our contributions to the organization, and that's a good thing. How do we do that? By being systematic, by developing practices that meet the three-part test of a system. First, can it be described? Second, can it be predicted? And third, can it be replicated? Well-functioning systems reduce variability, improve efficiency, and help ensure consistency of outcomes, all things that a high-functioning human resources department strives to achieve. To be that department that we are hoping to create, what might it look like? As a school district, our primary responsibility is to serve the educational needs of our students. As a human resources department, we are ultimately responsible for the hiring, training, and retention of every single individual who affects the school day lives of all of our students. We serve over 4,000 students, and our department strives to ensure that all 700 of our employees are successful in enriching and improving the lives of our students each and every day. So what improvements are we prioritizing for the next year, and what evidence or data points to this as an area in need of improvement? Well, continuous improvement means that we all seek to improve always. In that vein, the human resources department is seeking to refine our approaches, our practices, and our product every day. Many times, we are able to collaborate with our colleagues in this and other departments within the district for ideas on what and how to improve. Other times, we may seek outside input, as we did in 2023 in partnering with the Center for Effective School Operations, otherwise known as CISO. CISO conducted an audit of our human resources department, then provided us with feedback on our processes and performance. We generally received high marks from CISO. However, as continuous improvement never stops, there are always places that we can look to elevate our performance. One such area was in our human capital management technology. After a review of our internal processes and with feedback from CISO, we made the decision to better align our human capital management technology, which in turn led to us to partnership to a partnership, excuse me, with Frontline in order to put all of our human resources technology under one roof. As of July 1st, 2024, we are now using the Frontline suite of services for everything from job applications to leave requests to time sheets and beyond. Again, all in the name of continuous improvement to benefit every kid every day. Thank you for the time to share these ideas with you from the district's human resources team, and again, Rob Daniker on behalf of Zach, Sherry, and Tom. Thank you.
Hello, Monticello School Board. I envision the business department at the Monticello School District as a model of fiscal responsibility and compliance. Every decision we make and every dollar we spend will be prioritized towards enhancing our students' well-being and their academic achievement, all within a safe and secure learning environment. In this vision, administration can complete business-related tasks with minimal disruption to their day, allowing them to focus on the staff, students, and families they support. They trust that the Monticello School District spends its budget appropriately. Staff can complete business-related tasks with minimal disruption to their day, enabling them to concentrate on the students and their learning in a safe and secure environment. They believe the Monticello School District allocates its budget wisely. Families and residents are confident that the Monticello School District spends its funds wisely on students and their learning environment. To accomplish this vision, I will continue to evaluate and update our systems with the help of staff to create more efficient operations that reduce workloads and costs. This will allow staff, whether administrative, teaching, or support, to focus on the students and families of the school district. I will also ensure consistent communication regarding school funding and the financial status of the Monticello School District through school board meetings, district newsletters, and other public communications.
I want the Buildings and Grounds Department to be known for providing a clean, safe, and healthy environment for students, staff, and our guests of our facilities, also making sure that we keep up to date with current industry trends and innovation with building design, building materials, safety, and the best practices in the Jan-San industry. Teachers, principals, students, and families will be excited to come to school and notice all the demanding work that the custodians put in daily. The custodians will do a fantastic job at making sure they have clean learning spaces that are conducive to learning. One of the goals I have for next year is to work with the Technology Department to create a work order tracking system, a system that the teachers can put in work orders for items they need fixed in their classrooms. Maybe they need their desks lowered, a new pencil sharpener installed, they notice a leak somewhere. The custodians can also use a program to put in work order requests for HVAC issues, roofing leaks, or any other repairs they need done. This will be a great tool for us on the facility side to track repairs and help us with our LTFM planning. Thanks for taking the time to listen.
At Little Mountain Elementary, we want to be known for our safe, welcoming, inclusive environment and dedication to inspiring all learners to reach their highest potential as persons of integrity, critical thinkers, effective communicators, and resilient learners. At Little Mountain, you will see our students demonstrating a high level of academic achievement, exhibiting strong interpersonal skills and the ability to work well with others, and engaging in critical thinking and problem solving. You will see our teachers engaging students in evidence-based instruction, creating positive learning environments where students feel safe to take risks, and reviewing data and setting instructional goals. You will see our families engaging in their children's learning, attending school-wide events and conferences, and staying up to date with school communications. You will also see them ensuring consistent student attendance with a goal of attending 90% or more of school days. Our FAST MC and behavioral data show that we need to prioritize these areas to increase growth in our goal areas during the 2024 school year. We will focus on increasing student engagement strategies, ensuring all students are reading at grade level, improving our Tier One and Tier Two instruction, and boosting our social emotional regulation skills and curriculum. Little Mountain is looking forward to a great year of learning, engagement, and growth.
What do I want the school to be known for? I want Monticello to be known as a school district that excels in all activities and one that provides opportunities to meet the interests of our students. What will this look like? Our students, staff, and parents will be proud that they represent Monticello. The story of our students? Students will put in their best effort, and they will work hard to reach their full potential. As the Activities Director, I will keep an open mind to provide additional opportunities when new programs are brought forward. The story of our coaches and advisors? Coaches and advisors will be passionate about their programs, and they will always be striving to improve and to have their program competing at the highest level. The story of our parents and our community? Parents and community members will be proud of our programs, and they will positively promote our activities, support staff regardless of the role their child may have in the activity. Next steps? I want every student to feel valued in their activity. I believe we're doing a nice job, but there's always room for improvement. I want all staff to positively communicate with their students on a regular basis and to be approachable. When I receive complaints from students and parents, it's often due to lack of communication or them feeling confused about their role in the program. Families are more likely to accept their role when staff are honest and transparent about why something is happening and how or if change is possible. This will be stressed again this year at all-staff preseason meetings.
Hey, Monticello School Board, how you doing? David Reeves here. Hello to all of you, especially you, Jeff Hagley. Good to see you, man. Anyways, I'll move forward. Hey, what do we want a school to be known for? I'm gonna start with Turning Point ALP, which was called Turning Point back in the late 90s when the program started, and students had the idea of calling it Turning Point. And I think it's important to pay homage to that and what we want the school to be known for. And I think that Turning Point is a turning point where students can experience a new commitment to themselves and to their others, their peers, that changes the trajectory of their educational journey. That's a pretty powerful thing, and to be a part of that in the upcoming year, it excites me, it intimidates me, it's all of those things. So what does that look like for our students, our teachers, and our parents? Well, a few things. The core tenants of dropout prevention, okay? And support for at-risk students are well-documented in research. You can go back decades. The core tenants have been the same, and we don't identify those practices. We simply humbly pursue them. And that's what we'll be doing in the upcoming year and years. And the core tenants that we'll be focusing on this year include positive and clear expectations. What will that look like? It looks like students signing commitment forms, identifying ways that they need to be committed to themselves, identifying ways they need to be committing to others, and parents will sign that as well. And I don't want that form to go in a file and be forgotten. Our parents will also be signing a wall that says "committed" on it to self and to others, and they'll be writing their signature on a wall in one of our rooms as just a daily reminder that there's a mutual commitment here when you're part of the Turning Point community. So that's part of setting positive and clear expectations from the get-go, even before official enrollment happens. Individualized instruction, that's a core tenant of alternative programming. This looks like historically a Turning Point. It's looked like asynchronous courses where kids are working through a curriculum independently with teacher help and mentoring, so we'll continue that. But we're also gonna be embedding and working within the high school schedule. We'll be offering small group classes, small synchronous instruction, where you're gonna see a teacher. Research says best practice is about a 1 to 10 student ratio, teacher-to-student ratio. We're gonna aim for that as well, to offer small synchronous classes that align with trimester grading periods. Another core tenant, safe learning environment. To me, that's a main concern of giving up the off-campus facility, is that's been a separate, safe environment. How do we drop a safe learning environment where kids feel comfortable and valued within a bigger high school? Part of that is just room reservations. You know, we'll be utilizing one of the lecture halls in a nearby classroom, just so that it kind of shrinks the building for kids and gives them consistent spaces, so that's part of it. Second hour, or first hour of every single day will be what's called Community Systems, where all four Turning Point teachers will be with all kids, engaged in a variety of things. We do a community circle, sacred circle. They'll be involved in unified opportunities with special ed population. They'll be involved with an organization called Legacy to Inspire, which constructs things to give to the community. So there's a lot of things that we'll be doing in that realm. Flexible programming and extended learning opportunities, this is a huge tenant of alternative programming. I'm so excited that being in the high school is gonna help this explode for our kids. So our kids will now be able to flex their schedules so that they can take elective offerings in the high school that previously haven't been available to them. Shop classes, gym classes, language classes, arts classes, all those sorts of things. Like I said prior, small group instruction, asynchronous instruction, college and career field trips. You'll see our kids doing all of these things as they pursue their own development. Lastly, family engagement, it needs to be a core tenant of alternative instruction. And that looks like families meeting with staff and creating a plan that's specific to their kid to stay on track for graduation or to get on track for graduation. That's called a continual learning plan. It's required by the state on an annual basis. We create that with families, and then families review that throughout the year with us at conferences and things like that as we bring our families in to stay in the loop and an active member of how their kid's doing in class. So evidence of improvement, student attendance. And this is recalibrated for an alternative program, but I would like to see 50% of our kids attending 90% or time or more. And that's a lower number, but in comparison to other alternative learning programs, in comparison to where we've been at, that's a high barometer, but it's a barometer that I think is worthy shooting for. Also, evidences of improvement would be reflected in the overall graduation rates of Monticello Public Schools. So I'm hoping that by being on campus, we can intervene with kids earlier before they fall too far behind, so that they are getting an alternative pathway to graduation a little bit earlier, which will help contribute to meeting the goal of a 95% graduation rate. Hey, that was a lot. I don't know if I've spoken for 30 seconds or for 30 minutes. I'm not sure, but I'm saying goodbye and appreciate your time. Thank you.
I'm Monticello School Board. My name's Matt Colwell, and I worked at the high school. I'm one of the principals.
Lori Hansen, I also work at the high school.
And we often come to you with very specific requests, needs, ground-level stuff that's happening in classrooms. This presentation, this format, we're gonna talk bigger picture.
It's one of our goals is to continue the work that we started last year and build it into this year with our new schedule, and then really just focus on everything that we started in 2023. At the very core of everything that we do, we want to create a school system that puts students in a position to truly explore and identify various learning opportunities, which will give them guidance for their own post-secondary opportunities.
Obviously, when they walk in our building, we, one of the primary goals is that we have a safe learning space. It's a secure learning space. They gotta feel safe and secure. They wanna feel welcomed. A big part of that's connections they make with the adults in the building. And we talked repeatedly with our staff about establishing safe, secure learning spaces in our building, not only as a whole, but individually, so that when they walk into a classroom, they know who's walking in front. The staff know who's coming in front of them, and students feel like they're seen and heard.
And then we wanna expand on that. That's foundational, as Matt had shared. And then we wanna expand really rigorous, diverse, and dynamic career and college opportunities for every student. And as we had shared at the beginning, I think that's why we come to you with a lot of ground-level, building-level things. We really just wanna keep that at the forefront of everything that we design and develop with our students and with our staff there. And it just really is important to us to have a student-centered learning environment focusing on their future.
So in order to do that, again, we, there's a lot of professional development needs to take place. Some of it's very specific, yet some of it is bigger picture. It's gotta be real meaningful. The really big-picture stuff you've seen in Heard World's Best Workforce, the A&amp;I Grant, you know, some of the goals we have coming out of there with regard to graduation rates and attendance rates. Those are at the 30,000-foot level, and then specifically getting down to student achievement goals and reducing any disparities between some of our diverse learners is pretty important work to us. It's work that we're focusing on through our MTSS system, through the MTSS Plan, and enhancing that again now in, after we kind of laid a lot of work, put a lot of work into that at the ground level last year, MTSS building on that, so that all students are providing, are provided a learning environment where they can succeed and they're provided the support they need specific to them to what they need.
And so then, not to build off of that, that not only looks at Tier 1 instruction with high-quality, rigorous learning environments, but also Tier 2 interventions. And I think that's really where we wanna align everything that we do to MTSS, to the vision of a learner attributes that really we're gonna, we've shared with you a number of times that talks about development of vital skills that really transfer and translate into post-secondary opportunities, career and college planning. So for us, it's really important that everything is interconnected, and all of the arrows and all of the focus of the work is going in one direction. And so that's just that comprehensive look that we're bringing, MTSS, vision of a learner, career and college preparedness, best practices and research with our instruction and instructional design. All of it is just really wrapping into one work, and that collective approach that we're all working. As we think about the students, and we wanna keep them at the forefront, as we've shared a number of times. So we want our students to continue to be open and curious and exploring a variety of courses, opportunities, activities. How do they see themselves in every aspect of Monticello High School? And are they open to being involved and learning about the, where they fit in and what skills that they can kind of tap into? We want our learning environments to be active and engaged. We want it high quality, or high attendance rates, so that students are capitalizing on the quality instruction that our staff are putting in front of them. We want them to take advantage of internships, externships, opportunities, apprenticeships, all of that learning that goes beyond the four walls of Monticello High School, so that's important to us. And then, as we said at the beginning, we know that all starts with connections. Connections with people in our building and developing those connections with our community members are the people that will help tap into opportunities and their learning for all of those students.
Moving forward into this upcoming year, you heard us talk about updating our syllabi, thinking about specifically what staff will be doing, right? It's engaging in professional development. It's engaging within their department and their cohorts. We have a new schedule, obviously, so we have more time in the morning to meet. It's making sure our curriculum maps are built out completely. We know there's the new policy that we want to bring in front of them here at the beginning of the school year, dealing with curriculum and making sure there's clear expectations for what we need with regards to getting information out in front of parents and being very transparent with what is happening in the classroom. So we also wanna be able to dive into more data at the high school. That's been an ongoing effort of ours. Our cohorts need to be looking at data, whether it's behavioral, attendance, obviously, best practices with regards to what's happening and learning that's taking place in the classroom. And there again, be able to dial into specific students that need extra support, you know, and making sure teachers have the skills to identify those students and give them what they need to, so that they can succeed. And then lastly, just thinking about our parents and all the stakeholders, right? It's important for our stakeholders to know, parents specifically, to know what's happening at school, what's happening with their individual child, make sure they know how to monitor their progress and are reminded to do that, and then access any resources, you know, that they may need with regards to what their learner in particular might need to succeed. And obviously, the two-way communication, the relationship with our constituents is super important to us. And so we wanna be able to not only initiate that, but respond to it as needed and make sure we're being easily accessible to all learners, whether it's at an event that's going on or, you know, through email or phone calls, or just opening up the building on different nights for them to come in and see what's going on.
As Matt summarizes that, we often say "in partnership with you," or we use that word quite often, but we don't take that lightly. For us, that really is the core of how we work together to support all of our learners. So as we think about the work we're going to do, not only does it, there's some big things coming our way in the 24-25 school year, but also we wanna really keep that partnership with our community, with our parents, with our families, guardians, everyone that goes into supporting what every student needs to be successful through their four-year track at Monticello High School. So we fully anticipate that we will be back in front of you throughout the course of the upcoming year to give you more of those updates, really with the items and the happenings at the building level. This was just our opportunity to give you kind of the big picture, summarize where we were last year. We were just in front of you a couple weeks ago with an update of our goals and to just preview the work that we're going to continue into the 24 and 25 school year.
We appreciate your time and appreciate each one of you. Obviously, you're very invested in your role, your job, our schools, and we don't take your relationship with us lightly either. We really appreciate your kind words and your support through all of it and trust you give us with regards to learning at high school.
Yep, well said. Thank you.
Hello, I'm John Weekly, Director of the Sherburne Northern Wright Special Ed Cooperative, serving the communities of Becker, Big Lake, and Monticello. Today, I want to share with you our vision for the future and the steps we are taking to enhance our programs. At Sherburne Northern Wright, we aim to be known for our inclusive and supportive educational environment where every student, regardless of abilities or background, can thrive. We strive to create a collaborative community that supports the holistic development of each child. Our students ranging from age birth to 22 showcase a remarkable diversity in needs, abilities, and goals. You'll see a young learner starting their educational journey, students with varying disabilities requiring tailored support, and older students preparing for their transition into adulthood. Our students demonstrate resilience, creativity, and independence. They engage in individualized learning experiences that cater to their specific needs, participate in programs that develop life skills, and work towards personal goals that may include higher education, workforce entry, or independent living. This diversity enriches our community and exemplifies our commitment to supporting each student's unique path towards success. Our teachers are dedicated professionals who continuously improve their skills and employ innovative teaching methods. They create inclusive classrooms where every student feels valued and supported. You'll observe teachers using data-driven instruction, collaborating with colleagues, and engaging in professional development to better meet the needs of their students. Our parents are active partners in the educational process. They participate in school events, support their children's learning at home, and engage in open communication with teachers and staff. When parents face challenges to involvement in planning, we work to remove barriers to engagement and participation. You'll see a strong sense of community and collaboration between families and the school, ensuring that every child has the support they need to succeed. To achieve this vision, we are prioritizing several key improvements for the next school year. We're expanding special education services. We are committed to creating a full continuum of special education services in all disability areas for our member districts, including Monticello and cooperative programs. This will ensure that every student receives the support they need. We're promoting student independence. Through our Peri-By Design initiative, we aim to foster student independence while reducing the need for peer-professional support. This will empower students to take charge of their own learning while supporting our budgeting initiatives. We're optimizing program efficiency by clustering programs together. We can maximize staff allocations and create a culture of support among programs that currently operate in isolation. This includes relocating our 18 to 22 programs to one site, moving setting four programs to a separate site, enhancing programming in the areas of autism, emotional behavioral development, cognitive development, and transition. We're also enhancing our transition planning. We will increase planning and preparation with IEP teams to ensure that each student's IEP plan aligns with their post-high-school transition pathway, whether that be college, the workforce, sheltered work, or other options. In closing, we are dedicated to building for the long-term success of students with disabilities. Our mission can best be achieved by fostering collaborative relationships between school teams and families, instilling in all employees the recognition that they each make a difference in the lives of students and families, and providing a framework that acknowledges individual work while promoting teamwork. In summary, our goal at Sherburne Northern Wright is to create an inclusive, supportive, and dynamic educational environment where every student can reach their full potential. By implementing these improvements, we are confident that we can achieve this vision and make a positive impact on our community. Thank you for your support and dedication to our mission.
Hey, here today to talk about our online program. And ultimately, what we all want is a quality online program where kids can succeed academically and a program that offers flexible structures for kids and provides them with consistent and scheduled supports and opportunities for meaningful engagement. So there's a lot to unpack there, and I'll get to some of it here. One thing that's heading in the upcoming year is a better staffing allocation. Each of our ALP teachers are gonna have a third of their schedule or two class periods per day allotted for online responsibilities. And this is going to allow them to provide content-specific virtual drop-in sessions for kids to get support. Kids to get support, scheduled one-on-one meetings with kids for virtual support, as well as space and support for our part-time online kids that are taking maybe four or five classes in the high school, but also need to take one class online throughout the day. What this does is as our ALP teachers, or ALP/online teachers are providing more academic support, it changes Rocky Stein's role from more general academic support to engagement, management, and student intervention. And that's a huge name of the game. How do we engage students and keep them involved in our online environment? And that'll be the primary thrust of her role as our only full-time employee in the online program. So that involves things like attendance monitoring and reporting, conferences with families, one-on-one student check-ins for organizational support and monitoring and day structuring, and her day will take on a lot of that. Another thing that we look to keep making inroads in is using our school spaces as a platform for our online students for extended learning opportunities. That's coming in and continuing to serve in our school spaces, helping out with our, in our special ed classrooms, helping serve lunches, things that our kids have done on a small scale, but we wanna keep providing more opportunities for kids to come into our buildings and just chances for connectivity, whether that's kids coming in for movies and popcorn, utilizing our gym spaces, hooking up a Nintendo Switch. We want there to be platforms for our kids to have a sense of community and using our school spaces to do that. There's a lot of miscellaneous areas for growth that I can't dive deep into here, but just making sure that we have viable methods of communication with our families, that's an area of growth for me. Recognizing our students and having student awards and recognition, amplifying our website and making sure that that's as viable as it needs to be. Targeting program- Targeting program growth, like what does that look like in terms of growing our student body? And those are all areas of growth. Goals for our online program is, again, if we want our program to be marked by student success, we want our students to be completing courses at a high clip. So ninety percent of the courses taken in our program, we want those to be successfully completed and passed. That's pretty unique for an online program. We hover about just below that mark. I'd like it to see above that mark and that we firmly stay planted where we can say in advertising, hey, in this program, kids complete their classes successfully. And we have data at over a ninety percent clip that shows that. So that's one mark. Another thing is we want our graduation rates to reflect those of brick-and-mortar buildings as well. And if a goal is ninety-five percent in the general student population, we want our graduation rates to be ninety-five percent as well. And so this year, we had twenty-eight seniors on record in our online program. Twenty-five of them graduated. That's about eighty-nine percent, right? But then I think, well, two of those kids came credit deficient and they had wonderful academic years, you know? So it's kind of funny that that data points, I'd say that in actuality, their years really shown brightly even though they didn't finish in their senior year. If you did not account for that, then that's twenty-five of twenty-six students. That's about ninety-six percent. So the data can, you know, it changes a lot based on these small numbers. We had one kid that fell off our, you know, spring semester and unfortunately didn't finish. But we do want to make sure that our standards are staying high and that our kids are graduating at that ninety-five percent clip too. So hey, a lot there, a lot more to unpack, but appreciate your time and all the efforts that go into making sure our online program is working for our kids. Thank you.
This is Kristin Green, Principal of Eastview Education Center. Eastview will be known first and foremost for igniting in excitement and enthusiasm for learning. We will promote the idea of finding joy and curiosity in learning new things. We will set the foundation for what it means to engage in learning activities, be part of a school community, and grow into passionate and dedicated learners. Eastview will be known as a place where students are excited to be each day and where they learn not only foundational academic skills, but how to be a good friend and classroom companion. At Eastview, our youngest learners learn how to do school. Also at Eastview, our Connections in C5 students demonstrate a dedication to learning through actively engaging in classroom connections, real-world jobs, and local opportunities. These students are able to put into action the skills they've acquired along their educational journey and embed them into our school and local community. They too show us joy and curiosity as they venture into adulthood. At Eastview, you will see students adapting to the routines of school and increasing their stamina for learning. Eastview students will allow themselves to be challenged in ways they may never have experienced before in either their few years of life thus far or as they enter adulthood. Students will learn to follow the schedule of a school day, transition between activities, respond to directions given by various teachers and staff, and share space with other learners in a respectful manner. Most importantly, Eastview students will be allowed to embrace their natural curiosity, innocence, and joy and see how those very qualities create the very best learning experiences. Learning happens through the magical dance of being playful and fun while also rigorous and meaningful. Our Eastview staff is tailor-made to serve the students who enter our doors each day. Upon walking our halls, you will see welcoming and warm faces that create safe spaces for learning. Our teachers model kindness, inclusivity, and resilience. Our passion for being curious shines through in the opportunities we design for our students. We commit to continually advancing our understanding of how young learners can thrive academically and structure a day that feels playful, curious, and joyful. Families are first and most important teachers in a child's life. We view our connection with families as an essential component to student success. Eastview strives to welcome families into our Monticello School community. Just as we help our students learn how to do school, we hope to help our families understand the importance of a homeschool partnership. It is only through this partnership that our students can truly thrive academically. We want our families to engage with our learners in fun and meaningful ways that connect to the learning they're doing in school. Parents will have multiple opportunities to connect with our staff to truly feel the pulse of what learning looks like, sounds like, and feels like as a twenty-first century learner. Even though we house our very youngest of learners, that does not mean the bar is set low. Using a standardized measurement tool, FastBridge, we will closely monitor how students are acquiring foundational reading and literacy skills. Our goal is to ensure a solid foundational experience, placing them at grade-level expectations when they launch into elementary school. We place high priority on developing the foundational skills in all content areas and find ways to embed literacy into all of it. Our goal is to immerse students in language and embrace their natural curiosity and desire to read like the big kids. Our challenge is to ensure rigorous standards and expectations meeting the developmental needs of our students. We continue to challenge ourselves to embed the learning our staff has done with the science of reading and deliver it in a way that is highly engaging for young learners. We strive to keep them curious and excited about life and learning. Most importantly, we never forget the innocence of the young spirits that come to us each day. In creating a safe, welcoming, and inclusive learning space, we learn as much from them as they do us. To be surrounded by three- to six-year-olds each day reminds us of the tremendous responsibility we have to shape our community, and we take it very seriously. We seek to prepare our youngest learners for the high level of rigor demanded of them as they continue on their journey here in Monticello. At Eastview, we prepare every kid, every day.